I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Alabama Community College System to order. And I want to welcome everyone that's here. We appreciate your presence. We especially appreciate your interest in the operations and workings of the Alabama Community College System. We really appreciate you being here. The invocation is next, and I'd like to recognize Dr. Martha Lavender, Gaston State Community College. One of our newest presidents, thank you, Dr. Lavender.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts, with open minds, and with willing spirits. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunities that you've given us to serve the students of the Community College System, Father, to better them and their families. We appreciate those opportunities, Father, and we especially thank you for our Board of Trustees. We ask that you guide and direct them as they advance our system and move us within your will to what you would have us to do as an Alabama Community College System. Father, I ask that you bless each person that's here and the families that they represent. We are in such a wonderful season as we praise you for the gift that you've given us in your son, Jesus Christ. Lead us and guide us in all things, Father, so that we accomplish your will. We ask in his precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Lavender. Will now have our pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please stand up?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sharper, will you copy the vote, please?
Mr. Alson.
Here.
Mr. Lawrence Mansfield.
Here.
Mrs. Susan Moore.
Here.
Mr. Mike Caldwell.
Here.
Mrs. Russell Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. Johnson Davis.
Here.
Mr. Charles Sieden.
Here.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Here.
Mrs. Mary Scott.
Here.
Next on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Each trustee has received this in advance and has had a chance to look it over. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Question.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussions, any changes to the agenda that's presented? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. The agenda's approved. Next are the approval of the minutes of the November 12, 2015 meeting. Once again, the trustees have received a copy of these minutes in advance, had an opportunity to review them. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the vote.
Been a motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Floyd. Any discussion, any additions or corrections to the minutes that have been presented to us? If not, all those in favor approving the minutes as presented, please raise your hand. Those opposed. Item six, public comment. Anyone signed up? I will remark to those in attendance here, we have, trustees have posted in our file that addresses public comment. We've pro-posted it on our website, and in addition, we've had signage put up at the entrance to the, to the meeting. So everybody be informed of the, of the policy as far as public comment. So just everybody be, be aware of that. Next, item, section seven, actually. I would recommend, I recommend approval of items seven, eight, one through six.
Questions, Chairman?
Yes.
Have all of the, is all of the states in law, and will all the documents be provided simply for, for both internal and external purposes?
We have before us six action items under instructional student services facilities, physical information technology, adult education, workforce development. Is there a motion to approve these items?
Motion to approve.
There a motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any other questions for the Chancellor? Any discussion by the trustees on these six items? Okay, we have a motion and second before us to approve purchase of instructional equipment for John C. Calhoun Community College as an item, action item one. Action item two is to approve associate and applied science degree and certificate award in salon and spawn management with options in topology, barbering, aesthetics, and nail technology at Gaston State Community College. Item three is increase in room and board medical and uniform fees at Marion Military Institute. Item four, to approve associate in arts and associate in science transfer degrees at Trenton State Community College. Item five would be the purchase of instructional equipment, being specifically for use and welding at George C. Wallace Community College in Dope. Item six, the sixteen seventeen budget request for the Alabama Community College System. There being no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. Those six items are approved. Next, section eight. Mr. Vice President would like to take each of these items individually, so I recommend approval of item eight, A1. Item eight, A1, that's bookstore operation agreement with Pollock Higher Education Group at TA Lawson State Community College. Is there a motion for item one? To approve item one? Second by Mr. Brown. Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Any questions for the Chancellor? There being none, all those in favor approving this bookstore operation agreement at Lawson State Community College, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Item one's approved.
Now, I recommend, I recommend approval of item eight, A2, and I would just remind the board members that we have tweaked that schedule for January and March, just to bring it back one day, just because there were a few conflicts, and I would make that recommendation for next year's course.
Is there a motion to approve item two?
We'll wait till we get the discussion, if you will.
Is there a motion to approve item three? Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. Discussion, Mr. Smith.
Are these updated?
These are updated, yes, as listed, they are correct. The work session draft had both the thirteenth and the non-thirteenth of January, March, and so we made that correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate y'all being, placing these with the table, if they didn't have to break them down.
You're very welcome. So the January twelfth meeting and March eighth meeting will be Tuesday, and the rest would be the second Wednesday. Any other questions or discussion by the trustees? Once again, we've got our 2016 board meeting and works, work session schedule. This has been a motion and second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Item two is approved.
Item three, now, I would recommend approval of item eight, A3, 2016 legislative.
Item A3, which is the legislative agenda, and of course, this was covered thoroughly at our November work session. Is there a motion to approve this legislative agenda? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Would you like to say a thing now, or Dr. Baker?
There are going to be other items in the legislative session, and you will be providing those as early as possible. One in particular, we're going to keep those known. They will be included in the legislative process and as a series to change the business model. We have some presidents currently looking to be in that proposal, and they're asked to respond to our laws. I hope that we're all in good hands, and we'll post those, we'll include them against. It's just not something we can delay. We're ready to leadership, and that's going to be really, and that's, that's.
All right, Dr. Baker, we'll look forward to hearing more about that, maybe at work sessions and other meetings. Any further discussion from trustees, any questions? There being none, we have before us the 2016 legislative agenda for the Alabama Community College System. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand. Item three is approved. Item four, I would recommend approval of item eight, A4.
As we discussed during the work session, if you approve this, this would begin the planning process of consolidating these or merging these, these four institutions. And I would just remind you or let you know that this will be, this process will be led by Paupers State.
Is there a motion to approve, approve item four? Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brown. Any discussion by the trustees? Any questions for the Chancellor, for the staff? There being none, we have before us resolution to initiate the planning process for the merger and/or consolidation of Paupers State Community College, Jefferson Davis Community College, Alabama Southern Community College, and Reed State Technical College, and authorizing notification to the Alabama Commission on Higher Education and the Southern Associations, Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. And also, the Chancellor mentioned that Paupers would be taking the lead role in coordinating this with the other institutions. There being no further discussion, all those in favor of item four, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed, like sign? Item four passed.
I would now recommend approval of, of eight, A5. Again, to what I said for item four, Central Alabama Community College would be taking the lead in this merger process.
Is there a motion to approve, approve item five?
I make a motion to approve the resolution to initiate the merger and/or consolidation of Central Alabama Community College, Southern Union State Community College, Chattahoochee Valley Community College, and authorizing notification to the Alabama Commission on Higher Education and the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges.
And Chancellor will be leading this which institution?
Central Alabama.
Central Alabama will be leading that. All those in favor of this item, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion by, item five, the resolution is approved. Next, Chancellor.
May I?
Yes, yes. Scott, thank you. She has to leave early because the state board's meeting today.
They're calling lunch.
Look forward to, look forward to. Bring, bring a bunch of people.
I'm going to hold on to the Chancellor's report, and we'll raise the orientation. I think it's acceptable, sir. And today, leading orientation is Dr. Jim Offord, who's our Chief Workforce Officer, and I know that he has several who will assist in that orientation.
Thank you, Chancellor. Mr. Vice Chairman, distinguished members of the board, it is my honor and pleasure to present an overview of the programs and activities of the workforce development in not only our office here, but throughout our system. There is a folder in your stack that looks something like this that contains some flyers related to that. What I would like to do at the outset, with your permission, is to show briefly a portion of a video as a set induction of what we're going to be presenting following that. I think it provides us a good conceptual framework for not only what we're facing in the way of workforce challenges as a nation, but also as a state. And then I will proceed to, to lead the discussion of our programs and activities related to that. And following that, we're going to have some very brief vignettes of some of the things that are going on in our system, because my major emphasis here today is to say that it's what these people do and their staffs that impact our workforce development, challenges and opportunities. So I want to highlight them just briefly as we move forward in this. Could we tee up the video, please? Dr. Jensen first brought this to my attention shortly after his arrival here, and, and as I said, I think it provides a good framework for us.
But in order to guide our educational systems and maximize future income, we must understand the misalignment between education and our workforce. In my pursuit of higher education, I have earned two bachelor's degrees, two master's degrees, and am working on a PhD. In total, this has cost me over $150,000. I've done all this because I believe formal education is important. Part of this belief came from seeing charts like this presenting a correlation between higher degrees and higher income.
And higher income.
Showing on average. A person with a college degree earns far more money than the average person without a high school diploma. This perceived higher earnings for having a four-year degree has fueled a college-for-all philosophy, causing educators and parents to encourage going to the university, any university, to major in anything in pursuit of future job security, social mobility, and financial prosperity. This philosophy has increased college enrollment, resulting in 66% of high school graduates in this country enrolling in higher education right after high school. That's two out of three. Initially, they are deemed the successful ones, but what you won't see advertised is the reality that most drop out, and only a quarter of those that enroll will finish a bachelor's degree. Only after these few graduate do many of them start exploring careers. It is here that they discover that their degree may not have prepared them for the world of work. You may be well-educated, but not every degree is direct preparation for employment. This misalignment between degrees and job skills causes half of university graduates to be underemployed in what are called gray-collar jobs, taking positions that do not require the education they have received at a cost that is more than they can afford. Conventional wisdom suggests that a university degree guaranteeing is a higher salary, but with rising education costs, a shrinking job market, and the oversaturation of some academic majors in the workforce, this old advice is now a myth for a majority of students. The economy and the world have dramatically changed. Over the last three generations, we've gone from 13% of the population stepping into a college classroom to 60% attending some form of higher education. In 1960, when taking into account all jobs of the American economy, 20% required a four-year degree or higher, 20% were technical jobs requiring skilled training, and 60% were classified as unskilled. But what's the right percentage to meet the labor market demand for tomorrow? In 2018, Harvard University predicts only 33% of all jobs will require a four-year degree or more, while the overwhelming majority will be middle-skilled jobs requiring technical skills and training at the credential or associate degree level. A four-year degree may have many benefits, but think about the people you know who, from an economic perspective, inefficiently spent time and money to get a degree that perhaps they didn't really need for the career they are in. The true ratio of jobs in our economy is 1:2:7. For every occupation that requires a master's degree or more, two professional jobs require a university degree, and there are over half a dozen jobs requiring a one-year certificate or two-year degree, and each of these technicians are in very high-skilled areas that are in great demand. This ratio is fundamental to all industries. It was the same in 1950, the same in 1990, and will be the same in 2030. The hope for encouraging university education is that as the number of university-trained workers increases, the demand for their services in the workplace will increase as well. Unfortunately, this is not so. The whole pie may get bigger as the labor force and the economy grows, but the ratio will not change. The reality is, there will not be more professional jobs available within the labor market, and some professional jobs have been replaced by technology or are being outsourced. Well-intentioned attempts to send more and more students straight to the university will not change the types of jobs that dominate our economy. Normally, college-for-all mentality masks these labor market realities. The college-for-all rhetoric that has been so much a part of the current education reform movement is often interpreted as university-for-all. This message needs to be significantly broadened to a post-high-school credential-for-all. Students at various educational levels have left school without employable skills, setting up our children for failure, costing them and taxpayers millions, all while the labor market is desperate for highly-trained, skilled technicians. So how do you position yourself for high-wage, in-demand jobs? Let's say you were considering a career as either an electrician or a business manager. You would find that the average annual income for electricians is $51,000, only about half of the $105,000 average wage for management occupations. So at first glance, it looks as if getting a bachelor's degree in business is a no-brader, but adding skills and ability into the picture adds a whole new dynamic. What if you have the potential to become an excellent electrician but lack the skills and ability to be an excellent manager? Then you should be looking at projected incomes towards the bottom of the pay scale for managers and towards the top for electricians. You would then discover that electricians near the top of the pay scale make around $86,000, far higher than the income of a manager near the bottom of the pay scale at $52,000. Now, this is just one example, but the concept is true throughout all industries. The claim that you will make more money with an increased amount of education is not necessarily inaccurate, it's just incomplete. That advice is based just on the averages, but no one is perfectly average. Everyone has unique skills, talents, and interests. In fact, the income for the top individuals in a wide variety of skilled jobs that require an industry credential or two-year degree is far higher than the average income for many occupations that require a four-year degree. Nationally, associate degree earners range between $27,000 and $16,000, while bachelor's recipients earn between $34,000 and $97,000. But this data only accounts for the 25th to the 75th percentile of full-time adult workers. This means that 25% of associate degree holders earn more than $68,000 annually, and 25% of bachelor's degree holders earn less than $34,000. Our world has changed, and in this new economy, the university degree is no longer the guaranteed path towards financial success as it was for previous generations. And even if you do earn one, that education alone may not be enough. In today's highly-technical, knowledge-based economy, having hands-on skills and perfecting what you're good at can be more valuable than getting a degree in something simply to get one. Employers want to know what you can do and what you can do well, not just what degree hangs on your wall. Since new and emerging occupations in every industry now require a combination of academic knowledge and technical ability, we need to ensure that we're also guiding students towards careers and not just to the university.
I'll stop that there because it goes on to make some comments greatly aimed at students who are making those choices. And I want to say, with all of the influence that I can muster for this entire room, please, please don't misunderstand that I would ever counsel any student, old or young, not to pursue degrees or advanced degrees. The message is, rather, that if you have decided definitely that that's not the career pathway for you, there are alternative pathways in which you can have upward mobility, both socially and economically, and make a living, leading to family self-sufficiency. That's my message, not, "Don't go to college," but rather, there are alternatives to the baccalaureate and master's and doctoral degrees as career pathways, and that is actually where most of the jobs are available. And the main message, as far as I'm concerned in the video, is the 1:2:7 ratio, and that's not really a new phenomenon. It has increased slightly in the last few years, but it's, it's something we've been contending with for some time. So if you tee up the PowerPoint, we'll talk about some of the things that we are doing in response to that 1:2:7 imperative. First of all, this is a schematic representative of our workforce development system. We have a, a new one in the works, which is a star that Dr. Jensen has been working on, and I've had some input in where ATN is, is shown separately and certainly, it has a unique position because it's, it's associated with and a part of the Alabama Community College System, but it has a, by law, federal law, has an arms-length sort of organizational structure that Dr. Jensen, I'm sure, will say more about when he does his presentation at a subsequent meeting. But we have the Community College System, Workforce Division, and Adult Education, and we've And we've brought adult education into the workforce arena, not to diminish its standing, but to enhance it and to comply not only with the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, the new federal workforce act, but also to increasingly try to get that career pathway, or entry-level job, or that community college or university at the end of the GED preparation process. We also, of course, have the State Department of Education and its career and technical programs. Philip Cleveland is here. I saw him earlier. We appreciate his being here. Is Ed here? Ed Castile was coming today. He got called to the governor's office about 9:30. I can't imagine that the governor's invitation would supersede mine, but apparently he is still there and might come in later. I don't know if they're here as a show of support or to keep an eye on me, but we're glad they're here. And I will parenthetically mention that we are meeting on a regular basis and we're trying to operate more effectively and efficiently as a system. On down in the bottom circle is the Department of Labor. We have Mr. Fitzgerald Washington here, who heads that up. They handle the career centers and the employment service, labor market information, and some of those kind of programs that we interact with on a regular basis. And in general terms, I would characterize that as they are there for workers that are dislocated, or in distress, or need counseling, or job information, or assistance in seeking jobs, and that sort of thing. And we work closely with them, and our adult education is located in their facilities and so on. And then the Department of Commerce, AIDT, Ed Castile shop, they have the workforce councils, both the state group and the regional councils. Those regional councils, as you recall, were moved this summer into commerce in order to get greater alignment with the workforce council and the regional councils. And the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act that I talked about later is located within there. So, that is the system in Alabama. And it's, as we say, K degree, pre-K degree, I guess, Philip. So we are working together. We, as an example, believe it or not, we even stood up a program at a community college together a few days ago with the salary cost and the cost for equipment being equally shared between us and AIDT. So, we're proud of making that kind of progress. We've just worked very closely with elementary, secondary to shore up our dual enrollment policies and procedures a little bit. And we're glad to be working as partners in those endeavors. The point I want to make is that we are the economic development freeway for our state because when it comes to economic development today, as you can see from this slide, a study by LSU, the key location factors with site selectors are, and those are the people that make decisions about where companies go and expand, the top three are now workforce, workforce productivity, and availability, and cost. I just, on Monday, drove over to Atlanta and spoke with the North Alabama Economic Developers who are meeting with site locators in the Atlanta area, as they do every year. And the topic, interestingly enough, was not incentives. It was not productivity of the markets. It was not quality of life. It was not transportation routes. It was workforce. And that's why I was asked to be there. So that gives you some idea of how there is a growing realization of the importance of that if our state's going to move forward. And because of this 1:2:7 ratio that the video pointed out, the community college system has a vital role in every one of those numbers. We are the gateway to the one postgraduate degree in our state, just as much as we are the gateway to the two baccalaureate degrees in our state, just as we are the gateway for the seven in our state that require high school completion or equivalency, and then some kind of technical training beyond high school. And the ones and twos, as you know, that's what we call our academic transfer program. The students that come to our schools and then transfer on to colleges and universities and who perform as well or better in general terms than their native students. And certainly, we want to emphasize that. And any emphasis on career and technical education complements, in my view, the academic transfer education and vice versa. The better we can be in both, the more we're likely to attract people in both. We have about $150,000 credit, non-credit, and adult ed students in various stages of that pipeline. But once again, I want to emphasize that we're not about discouraging people from college degrees. You know, in my view, there's an intrinsic value in education at whatever level. And I'm old-fashioned. I think our charge is to teach people not just how to make a living, but also how to make a life. So, I certainly don't want to discourage that or diminish advanced degrees, whatever, in any way, or to take away from our academic transfer program. But our priority in the workforce division is helping our state provide for the seven. And to do that, you have a description of these programs in your folder there that's more in-depth than what I will provide. This is the best overview in the interest of time. The heart of what we do is career and technical education. We have 17 clusters in the system. Alphabetically, they range from agriculture to transportation and logistics. They are the business and industry pipeline. We develop curricula in partnership with industry now. We don't just sit down and decide what. We have DACOM processes, Development and Curriculum Process, where we bring industry experts in to help us develop our curriculum. We have approximately 40,000 current enrollees in those programs. One subset of that, the health sciences and nursing, where we have over 20 occupations or careers. And we have almost 100% employment rate, more than half of the RNs produced in the state and three-fourths of the LPNs. We have had great increases thanks to the legislative appropriations and the hard work of our people at the colleges and some of our staff. We've greatly increased dual enrollment programs. This is not a new concept, but it's a greatly expanded concept in our state and actually throughout the nation, where we have students in grades 10, 11, and 12 if they meet certain criteria. And our courses must have the same academic integrity and content as those taught at the college. We have around 10,000 students this year enrolled in those. I say around because this academic year is not yet over, but we already have that number enrolled. And we've just recently had a task force, as I said earlier, engaged in making sure that we're maintaining access and quality as we expand that program. We also have training for existing business and industry, incumbent worker training, that is, training for those workers who are already out there in jobs. You have an action item related to that in the work session this afternoon. Continuing education that some of our colleges provide for businesses. We have on-the-job training. We have the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act partnership. Some of those jobs have tax credits for OJT. And we work with Fitzgerald and his folks in that regard. We have a newfound interest and emphasis on experiential learning, learning on the job. We are working with registered apprenticeships and non-registered apprenticeships, paid internships and non-paid internships, boot camps that some of these folks have and are planning that are intensive, 40-hour-per-week kinds of activities in the summer to engage people in these number-seven careers to jumpstart them in those programs. We have a Ready-to-Work program. This program works to help people obtain the essential skills, or sometimes referred to as soft skills. I always say, I don't know why they call it soft skills. They're the hardest ones to instill. But they are an essential part of being a good worker, as you all know, regardless of your job-specific skills. And AIDT developed this program in cooperation with business and industry. And we have a partnership there where the colleges are the primary presenters of the program now. And adult education is increasingly getting involved in Ready-to-Work. And for those who complete the requirements of the program, they can earn a Ready-to-Work, Alabama Ready-to-Work certificate, as well as a national career readiness certificate based on ACT work keys. And we have thousands of people in Alabama now who have their career readiness certificate. I'm real proud to say that I was involved with the inception of that program in one of my many previous lives in workforce development in the state of Alabama. I just attended a meeting at which one of the Mercedes affiliates and suppliers gave a presentation on retention in their operation for those students who had completed the Ready-to-Work program versus those who had not. And the retention rate for those who had been through the program was exceptionally high. And I have contacted them, and they've given me permission to use that data. And as soon as I get through with the board orientation and all this stuff we've got going on this week, I plan to do a return on investment study on that and include that in the presentation because it is good data that shows this program can work and it can save industry and business money because all of you in business know that retention is an important factor in your bottom line. In spite of all these programs, we have millions of adults who have low basic skills. And in spite of all these programs, we still, you see in this graph, only have a small portion of those people in actual programs to remediate their deficiencies. And I'm not going to go into this, you hear this ad nauseam, but you know our ranking for education and training of our populace has slipped internationally in relation to others. As a result, we are putting new emphasis on adult education through which we offer basic skills instruction and equivalency to diploma preparation. And we have programs in correction facilities, English as second language. We are putting new emphasis on these last two. And David Walters is going to talk for just a bit after my presentation, more specifically about that, so I won't say anymore about that. But in spite of all these programs and all these opportunities that we offer, we still have a lot of unmet workforce needs. And those center around, and you've heard the chancellor talk about this before, those middle-skilled jobs that are often going unfilled. This graph illustrates that. I know it's difficult to make out the print, but as you would expect, the red and orange, those are the middle-skilled jobs nationally. The low-skill jobs, we have more workers than jobs. Even slightly in the high-skill jobs, we have more workers than jobs. But in the middle skills, we have more jobs than workers. It's just the reverse. That's nationally. And then in Alabama, it's even more pronounced. You see, the red line significantly exceeds the orange. So to close this gap, we have to do more and better. Even though we have some great exemplary programs and our people are working so hard, and I'm going to give you some examples of that in just a moment. We have to, as you've heard many times already, make instructor salaries more competitive. I was at Wallace-Hansfield the other day doing a tour of their programs. They have an instructor there whose son went through his program and started with Nissan, I believe it was, making $37,000 more a year than his dad was making teaching the program. So, he didn't know whether to be proud or upset. So that's what we face in that regard. We have to replace aging infrastructure. We are celebrating our 50th anniversary, like my wife and I are. And aging infrastructure is an issue. We have to update our equipment. Those of you in... I already regret saying that. I need to stick to my script. We have to update equipment. The change in equipment and technology is so rapid and now... But we have to keep pace with it, or we become irrelevant with our instructional program. And as you heard earlier in one of your previous meetings at Lawson State, we have to increase access and success and bring more people into those programs. We have to update technology and data to better determine our skills gaps and know what that supply and demand in these critical occupations, what the equilibrium is there, and where we need to emphasize and recruit, and add programs or delete programs and that sort of thing. We have to move toward performance-based funding in that regard. We have to streamline. We have to adapt. In my view, that is the greatest strength of the community college system versus other educational institutions, is our adaptability and to be agile in changing. And of course, we must be responsive to industry to the greatest degree that we possible can, and business and industry, of course. So, what are we doing in that regard? We are in the process of, I'm simplistic in my planning, looking at what is in several parts of our program. And we look at what should be. The difference between the two is a need. Our performance gap. Is that because of inadequate talent? Is it because of inadequate infrastructure, like the things we were just talking about? Or inadequate capacity for innovation and change? We try to determine that. And then, you've already heard Minister O'Connor talk about, we are currently under an assessment. There was preliminary report about that yesterday at the Workforce Council meeting. And that's going to serve, along with our other data, as some baseline data for us to get a representative group with input from all of our various constituencies, internal and external, and develop a strategic plan that will lead to our improvement of our programs and activities and outcomes. Concurrent with that, we also have a study going on about branding our workforce development system as a whole. system as a whole, and certainly we want to piggyback on that as a system and brand our subset of that system and do greater marketing and targeted marketing of these programs and careers that are high-growth, high-demand, as we discussed, so that we can improve these pipelines and get, close those gaps on the supply-and-demand equilibrium in these critical occupations, which, of course, leads to improved economic development, better jobs for our citizens, better workers for our businesses, and that's really the bottom line of what we're all about, in my view. We have a lot of things going on. We aren't waiting around for the development of that study and strategic plan. We have task forces on dual enrollment that have just, as I said, been working and have just finalized their work, and the colleges will be receiving the chancellor's letter and procedures policies and so forth on that. We have a grants review committee. We are revisiting the grants process, and you're represented on that as Mr. Smith. And as I said, we have an item on today's work agenda to that purpose. We are standing up, just yesterday I was talking with the head of the Truck Driver, the Trucking Association, and letters went out yesterday, emails, to stand up a group to look at that. And at the same time, we have increasing demand for truck drivers. We are diminishing our number of programs and access to them, and I don't claim to have any ready solutions. All I do on all these things is I'm a convener, and I just bring people that do know something about this together. We look at best practices in other states and at our own institutions, who we have some who are doing a great job with truck driver training, as an example. And so we develop handbooks of best practices. I hope we can build some partnerships with them where they might supply some of the equipment, because it is so equipment-intensive and expensive upfront. So we're looking at those kinds of things, just trying to give some examples. We have another group after Christmas on ability to benefit and credit versus non-credit, short-term training, inter-level jobs, and that sort of thing, to look at that whole bottle of wax. Some of our presidents and deans of instruction and others will look at that, adult education. And we're about to embark on bringing some of our experts in information technology together, and we've got a partnership that we're forming that I'll talk about. We have a lot of new career tech programs that our people are working with the colleges to stand up. We have some new programs in injection molding and logistics, supply management, cybersecurity, tractor-trailer repair and maintenance, animation, some new tool and die programs, machining, ironworker, mechatronics, and you'll hear more about what that is if you're not familiar with it, when these people give a little short explanation of some of our exemplary programs. So we're changing. We want it to be at a manageable pace and in ways that we justify through data. And we are partnering, as this slide indicates. I mentioned that we, the Economic Development Partnership of Alabama, we just working with elementary, secondary, and them to do some things related to statewide initiative in information technology. Our people have been working really hard with the early childhood folks, children's services folks down on the second floor, because we have a new demand for people who are certified to work with preschool and that sort of thing, childcare. We just stood up a program for ten companies, a consortium at Southern Union. We're in the process of doing that. And these colleges represented in the audience here have hundreds of partnerships like that. And I wish we had time to hear about all of them. We will, but got a couple of them very briefly. And as I said before, we're working closely with our workforce development partners. So this is what I'm suggesting, that the board in our state, interested citizens, stay tuned, because we're good, but we're getting better. And that is our goal, and we'll be working with you in that regard. Now, I'm going to get in trouble doing this, I'm fully aware of it, but I asked our staff to bring some geographically representative programs down here to talk. I gave them a two-minute limit, and I want them to know, they're right up front here, that if they go over two minutes, I will start first clearing my throat, and then I'll walk up beside you. And I have met with security this morning, and I have a taser in my right pocket, so we hate to put that kind of limitation on you, but we just want to give our board and the audience a flavor for the great things that are going on in our system already, and that's the kind of thing we want to enhance. We could have done this with any, all of our institutions, but time did permit, so this is not a unique sample, it is a representative sample. So I'm not going to introduce all of you, because that would detract from the time, but if you would come forward and introduce yourselves to the board and give us two minutes on your exemplary program.
Good morning. Kim Ennis, interim president, Bevel State Community College. I'm joined at the podium today by our dean of instruction, Dr. Leslie Cummings, and by Tom McNeil, workforce development specialist for the Southern Company, our industry partner, who was more than happy to join us here today. We're going to highlight the Technical Education Center at Bevel State Community College on our Summerton campus. The partnership of Bevel State, Southern Company, Alabama Power, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers is a marriage between education and industry. The opening of our center on November the ninth, we did have a grand opening on the Summerton campus. It was attended by the chancellor, Dr. Alford, Mr. Caldwell, and a number of others in this room. It is a state-of-the-art, multimillion-dollar, exclusive facility, training facility. The primary objective of the center is to provide apprenticeship training to incumbent workers for the Southern Company, Alabama Power. The reason this was located in our, on our campus, within our service area, are two large power plants. However, the emerging relationship between Bevel State and Alabama Power, this center will serve all Alabama Power fossil generating facilities. Bevel State students, what will they get out of this partnership? Students in the electrical technology program, the machine tool technology program, and the welding technology programs, who desire to work in these industries, will have opportunity for training, to possibly work on the railroad, plant manufacturing, industrial maintenance. This is not limited to Alabama Power training. Representatives from Bevel State, there are two other products that are a result of our partnership. These folks sat down together, lined up curriculum. We have two new comprehensive degree programs, industrial electronic technology and industrial mechanical machine technology that will be available to our students. Our purpose was to close the work, the American skills gap in, with this partnership between Bevel State and industry. We are truly grateful to the commitment made by Alabama Power and the IBW to stay with us to make this happen. Got to go off-court, off-script, just a little bit right here. This was a, this was a three-year process in ever-changing leadership at Bevel State Community College. But here we are, and we are very proud of what we've accomplished. We believe the new leadership that's coming, we think we can do even more, we're really excited about that. We would like to be a little more flexible than three years to accomplish things, but we still are very proud. I didn't hear him clear his throat or anything.
Good morning. I'm Patty Houston. I am the dean of workforce development for Faulkner State Community College. I'm not going to talk about existing programs and expanding programs at Faulkner State. Specifically, I'm going to speak about aviation and those changes. Dr. Alford asked me to update you, the board, on a decision and a vote that you made earlier this fall as it pertains to the changes statewide in aviation. As you are aware, Faulkner State is in the process of managing the aviation facility and campus that's located at Brookly Field in Mobile, Alabama, and we also have a lab that's located in Fairhope at the airport, at the Fairhope Academy facility there. Long story short, you made the approval for us to start that process. We have the approval for the Alabama Commission on Higher Education, that is done. We have two layers left, that is, of course, SAC COC, and then the United States Department of Education. We have notified SAC COC of our intent to submit four applications for aviation alone. You may not be aware, but it's not just the application for the facility itself, but we, Faulkner State, have to get approval to teach every program that they're teaching currently at that facility, and there are three of them. So in January, we hope to have those four ready and sent to SAC COC, and we will await their approval. Then we must have their approval in order to submit an application to the U.S. Department of Education, and that is basically tied to federal financial aid and Pell Grants. And so that is a process, and it is timely. In the meantime, we're not standing still and waiting for all of those pieces of paper to come back and say, yes, you're approved, and you can move forward. We are, what we are calling a transition team, has been put together at Faulkner State to begin the work to make this happen, so that when we do receive that final approval, we have most things, if not all things, in place, ready to move forward. Now, what does that mean specifically? We, as a team, have gone to the facility. We've hired a campus director who's doing a wonderful job managing the campus. There's a wonderful faculty there, so we've inherited some wonderful people to work with. The transition team is doing things like looking at our IT infrastructure and what it's going to take to take over that facility and make it part of our system at Faulkner State. We're looking at library services, which is a very specific standard that is tied to SACs. The equipment, we have the equipment list in hand. We are checking against that list, doing an inventory of our own, so that once we are approved, we're ready to tag that inventory, and that's a big part of the process. We're also working with that faculty to see what other equipment do we need there to make this a state-of-the-art center. So we're doing little things along the way. We're looking at the curriculum. There are some issues with the aviation curriculum. We've talked with staff here at the state level to maybe do a statewide rewrite or look at some of it, because we have some issues with credit hour versus contact hours, and the ability to hire adjuncts and those kinds of things. And last, and certainly not least, and probably the most important thing that we're doing, is the, looking at PR campaign. That facility can hold 300 students at the Brookly site. I think currently, we may have 150 students, if not a little less than that. That's an issue. This whole plan, as I understand it, is to grow that workforce for the industry in this state. We have to do that, and the best way to do that is to publicize it, do the campaign, get into the living rooms, get out into the communities of southwest Alabama to make this happen. So that is our transition team and in process at this time. And that's basically all I have on aviation. I do want to add one thing, if I may, since he's not clearing his throat yet. And this is in support of your presentation, Dr. Alford.
That's okay.
Okay. One of the things, a very valid point I think we have is in the past and historically, students, and college students in particular, were one or another. They were either university-bound, bachelor's degree and above, or they were technically-bound, one or the other. I think it's important to note that that line is blending, and it's not only blending from the K-12 to us, it's blending from us to the universities. We, and I know all the community college here, colleges here, have two-plus-two agreements with universities across this state, in which they take our students that have associate applied science degrees in technical areas, and they accept credits within those technical areas toward a bachelor's degree. That's a huge step toward offering opportunity for students. What a gift, especially in a climate where it costs so much money to go get a college degree now, for a student to get a skill trade where they can actually make a living. And if they decide to go back and get a bachelor's degree, they already have credits in place that will transfer, and a seamless transition to a university level. The newest one we're working on, Dr. Alford mentioned is animation. Five years ago, we partnered with the University of Quebec, NAD Center in Canada. They are specialists in this field, and I have to tell you, this is probably the fastest-growing field, not only nationally, but internationally. That particular institution has worked with Japan, China, France, Mexico, they're international trainers. The first work that they did in the United States was with us at Faulkner State Community College. We are writing a two-plus-two now that includes them and also the University of South Alabama. The University of South Alabama wants those students to come and earn a bachelor's degree in this field there. Their College of Communications has already approved of what we would call an option, but a minor for their students are coming to our campus this summer to take courses with the Canadian instructors that will come down in pursuit of their bachelor's degree. So that's just an example of the two-plus-two process that all of us at the community college levels are doing. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Vicki Carlowicz, president of Wallace State Community College in Hansville. Dr. Alford asked me to share three best practices with you today within our early college initiative that we began in 2006 with a national tech demonstration grant. That project, we began in 2006, became sustainable 2000, I mean, five years later. The first is our Fast Track Academy, and we have served over 700 students in that program, where we admit a cohort of high school juniors and seniors each fall, who are 100% Wallace State students, and they finish their high school diploma and their associate degree concurrently. We have a 98% high school graduation rate in that program, and so far, a 63% college success rate, which is about 13 percentage points higher than the national average. Last year, the Coleman County superintendent's daughter had been served in that program when they relocated from Mobile. She was in an IB program there, and he liked the program so well that he decided he wanted to expand it with a unique partnership with the Coleman County School System called Fast Track to Industry, which is focused entirely on career tech. He was able to kill two birds with one stone. You accelerate students to completion in career tech fields much more quickly, but by his, allowing some of his career tech students to be served on our campus, he's also able to expand career tech student enrollment in the county school system. We could quadruple the enrollment if funding were available or policies permitted us to provide scholarships to high school students, which we're currently unable to do. But that program this year is serving 85 students, and out of that program, well, let me also point out that in the Coleman County School Program, the Fast Track to Industry, they provide the high school teachers to provide any high school subject matter instruction in an open-learning, computer-assisted environment, and they keep their building open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. four days a week, so students can be served with a just-in-time learning approach that is very, very unique, and we're having great results with it so far. And then finally, out of the Fast Track to Industry, we, one of our industry partners, Rayhau, which was the first provider to, the first automotive supplier to Mercedes, their plastic injection molding facility. They wanted to expand the numbers of apprentices that we have with them already in a high school apprentice model that is based upon the German model. So we brought in German trainers from Rayhau in Germany to help our faculty to develop a curriculum for polymer production technician. They admit high school seniors, a cohort of eight. They spend two days a week on our campus and three days a week in the plant. Those eight high school seniors earn about $300 a week while they're completing their associate degree and high school diploma concurrently. They will need to spend one more year in an apprenticeship program after they graduate high school to satisfy Rayhau's objectives. But those are three best- But those are three best practices that we've had great success with, and we hope that we'll be able to expand those in the future.
Good morning. My name is Brett McGill, and I'm the Dean of Health Sciences at Calhoun Community College, and I'm going to briefly discuss our dual enrollment program. And I want to start by talking about why dual enrollment. I don't think I have to convince this boy how important dual enrollment is. So I'm not going to list each thing, but I want you to see the type of student, based on research, that we attract by offering dual enrollment programs in our high schools. EMT is just one of many that we offer at Calhoun. When you think about why we chose EMT, EMT's curriculum is very adaptive. My next slide is going to demonstrate why any program that is healthcare-motivated is beneficial to us in this room, but also to the students and to the workforce. Think about, it's a springboard into medicine. So I'll show you a slide in a couple of minutes that will talk about the numbers. And when you see the numbers, sometimes people focus strictly on certification. That's one of our goals, but it's not our only goal with this program. Our goal is to attract younger people into the healthcare field, and EMT is the best way to let them see a global view of what healthcare may be. So not every student that comes into our program will actually be the EMT. They may actually end up going to medical school, and they actually go to nursing school, PT, any of the vast areas of healthcare. Oh, and I forgot to mention, DOL said that the job rate will grow at 33% in EMS-specific, but in all healthcare areas. The grading of American is a term that the Department of Labor is calling, and if you'll look at the second part, by 2051, one in four Americans will be over the age of 65. We will be in a crisis mode if we're not already in trying to attract people into the healthcare industry, so that they'll, there'll be somebody to take care of us when we enter that area. So our solution is, is get into the high schools while the students are young, attract them into healthcare, and one of the ways we're doing that at Calhoun is offering the EMT dual enrollment program. Our students are selected using the criteria that have been established by the state as far as dual enrollment. You can see the first five bullet points there are the standard dual enrollment criteria. We at Calhoun have added a few others, because the standard for EMT is the same as it is on campus. These students must pass a nationally standardized curriculum. There's no watered-down version of EMT. They get the same EMT program that the students who are on campus taking our EMT class. They have to sit a national certification, and we're evaluated based on their results. You can see the three we've added. We have a 20 composite ACT score. They must be 18 years of old at the national standard. They can't sit the licensure exam unless they're 18. So the 10th and 11th graders typically can't qualify for our program. They're usually regulated back to seniors, but we also offer some pre-EMT courses in some of our high schools that get our juniors ready for that EMT course if they'll do as a senior. And then we like a math or a science recommendation from those teachers. Here are our results. We've had 372 students with 40 currently enrolled. You can see 282 have completed. Of the 50 non-completers, 16 were non-completers in the pilot phase of this program. That was in 2009. We've learned a lot since then. And so you can see our attrition. We know how to choose our students and how to make them successful as they go through. 100 students, 102 students have chosen to sit the national registry. That's the same test that every EMT in the state and the country takes, and our pass rate, as you can see, is at 86%. That's higher than the national and the state average. These students are well-prepared and ready to go. You remember I talked about the grading of America? Don't let 102 students, you think, well, out of 282, that's only a third. If you look at the bottom slide, 275 of those students surveyed, we survey every student at the end of the program, said they will go into healthcare. A lot of the students, especially students who are interested in healthcare, want to go to medical school. Chaplain, which is a national board exam that allows, helps students get into medical school, actually give extra points to medical schools, do some of students who have passed an EMT course. So these students are using EMT not just to become an EMT, but they're using it as that springboard into medicine. So this is a quick, quick version of what our program is like. And I do need to say that about two years ago, our program was a top-10 finalist for a bellwether. And if you don't know what a bellwether is, that's the highest trophy of community colleges in innovation and workforce. And so we were thankful to go through that. I did the same presentation, took me over an hour. So if y'all got anything, thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Jason Moore. I'm the Associate Dean for Corporate Programs at Sheldon State Community College, and I want to quickly share with you some of the business and industry partnerships that we have at Sheldon State and how we're working with business and industry at our college. One program we have at Sheldon State in conjunction with Mercedes-Benz is our mechatronics program. That program, one thing I want to point out about that program is, look at the credit hours that are in that program. Mercedes, to work at their plant, they're requiring students to go through 99 credit hours of training, and that just shows us the kind of skills that are needed out there in the workforce today. This program, because it's 99 credit hours, we award students upon completion an associate's degree in industrial electronics and a short certificate in industrial maintenance. The student, the top 75% of the students that complete this program are offered a job in either the paint shop or the body shop, and then the very top percentage of the students that complete this are asked to go into maintenance. And if you're awarded a maintenance position with Mercedes-Benz, you have to complete an additional 18 months of training at their site for Mercedes-specific equipment. So that just shows you that there is a huge skill level there. We also have a automotive technician program with Mercedes-Benz. Currently, it's a 27-credit-hour short certificate program to help fulfill their need in their assembly shop. We are currently, we have submitted for an associate's in applied science recently in automotive technology, because Mercedes is wanting us to be able to do more training so they can use that program to help fulfill the need in their systems skills department. And that's the department where they do repair on vehicles that have problems once they go off the assembly line. We also have a 81-credit-hour program with Nucor Steel. Students have finished that, received an associate in applied science and industrial electronics. And this program, Nucor is bringing students from their facilities all over North America to Tuscaloosa for that training program. It's a three-year training program where students go to school and work at Nucor Tuscaloosa in the fall and spring, and every summer, they return to their sponsor meal and work, OJT. Nucor pays for all their travel, all their housing, all their utilities, all their books, all their tuition, and pays them 40 hours a week while they're in this training program. On completion, students will return to their home meal to work. We also have other smaller partnerships with Hunt Refinery. We also have a Nucor mechanical program, which is different than the technical academy. We also have partnerships with Beal Goodrich, Westerville, and Pfeiffer Incorporated. We also have internship and co-op programs like every other college does and celebrate our technical programs. And we are currently working to begin developing DOL registered apprenticeship programs in the west Alabama area. We are currently trying to get one, our first one registered in our non-credit carbon program. We plan to hopefully have it registered by January, and then we're going to change our focus and try to get a youth apprenticeship program registered in logistics. And then from there, we plan to try to get more adult apprenticeships in logistics and hospitality. And I meant to delete this slide because I don't think I have time for questions and comments. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Wilson. I am Assistant Dean for Career Tech Programs at Lawson State. We are beginning a center of excellence for mechatronics at Lawson State. You have some slides on your desk in a folder, so anything I can't cover are in there. Mechatronics is actually mechanical, electronics, electrical, and it's in every industry. You have it in your homes, actually, your alarm systems, your smart appliances. It is mainly right now in the manufacturing area, because jobs are, there are a lot of jobs in this area. And our instructors right now are working to go to receive certification in Siemens Mechatronics. So we have two instructors that will be going to Michigan in January to train for Level One, and they will be going to Germany to train for Level Two in July. Our students, this is a globally recognized certification program, and our students can stay with us in Alabama, or they can go somewhere else and work in the industry. But these are globally recognized certifications.
Thank you very much. So if anybody says to you, things aren't going on in community college in career and technical education, and we have just disproven that, and again, we could have had every school in the state do some things along those same lines about innovative things they're doing. Definitely, we need to do more and better, and that's what we're going to be about. But we're really proud of what our people are already doing. You know, my standing up here reminded me of a story I just thought about. I don't know if any of you are old enough to remember, Wilt Chamberlain, who was a great basketball player, I think was 7'4", and set all kinds of scoring records and everything. Back in the day, when he played, I guess it was in the '60s, before that every game was on TV and before everyone had a cellphone to call in after the game, sports writer at one of the papers in Philadelphia had a deal where, after every game, one of the players would go find a payphone and call back into the sports writer and give you some quotes for the morning story about how the 76ers did and so forth. And after one game, Walt Hazard, I believe that was the other player's name, was sent out to make the call back to the Philadelphia sports writer, and he did so. The sports writer asked him how it went, and he said, oh, we won big time, no contest. And went on and elaborated. He said, well, Wilt and I scored, just the two of us, 102 points. And so the sports writer wrote it up in that fashion. Turned out that Wilt had scored 100, and he had scored two. So I'm kind of identifying with the guy that scored two to stand up here before you and take the front of all the great things that have gone on and are going on in our system, because we're only providing two. But our staff is very responsive to our people in our system, and every time we have a staff meeting, I remind them, not that they need it, but I'm reminding myself as well, that the only reason we exist here in Montgomery, in this office, is to help them help their We have another little blurb on adult ed. Can y'all, can we do that? And that will complete it. I apologize, but we get excited about our programs. Chancellor said, we don't have a crowded agenda, take all the time you need, and that was a mistake, Chancellor. So David, if you'd come on up and talk to them a little about adult education.
How much time do I have to?
You've got two minutes.
Take all the time you need and finish up. In two minutes. All right. The challenge I have is I actually have 15 slides, and I have a two-minute video, so right there is two minutes. So I'm going to have to do the 15 slides in about three or four minutes. So I'm going to try to do it real quickly for you. And let me first start off by saying that anything that I don't cover, anything you need at all, you let me know or let the chancellor know, we'll get the information to you very quickly. All right, let's talk a little bit about adult education and what we do in adult education. The agenda today, I'm going to cover who we are, what we do, population we serve, strategies, and I'm going to highlight the innovative programs that we've got out there. And again, like Dr. Alford said, we've got great things going on everywhere in adult education, but we are highlighting one specific program today. We've got some wonderful things going on throughout the system. All right. This is the federal definition for adult education. Now, I'm not going to read this to you. You're going to look at it, and I'm going to summarize it for you really quick. Basically, what we do in adult education is provide basic skills to ensure our students that have dropped out of high school get back the skills that they need to go on and to transition into post-secondary education or into employment. And it's all about literacy and numeracy. And as Dr. Alford said earlier, literacy and numeracy, the United States needs a little work in those areas for us to continue to be globally competitive. So adult ed plays a key role in all of this, because we're the only entity out there that works with our adults that have dropped out of high school. So we're very passionate about getting them enrolled back into a program of study so we can transition them into one of our colleges, into additional training, or into employment at the highest levels possible. Let me show you this slide here really quickly. What we have here is a federal and state, and then adult ed, obviously. So federal is, we get funding from the federal government. In order to get the federal funding, we have to have a certain level of match from the state government, okay? Once we do that, then those funds are encumbered, and they follow federal laws or the most stringent laws, which could be state laws as well. So we both have federal and state laws that we have to abide by. We have 27 adult education programs in state Alabama that covers all 67 counties. Very proud of that. This is done through a competitive bid process. We're required by law from the federal government to competitively bid out our adult education services. And as you can see, the current makeup is 27 adult ed programs, 24 through the community college system. One is through a state agency, the Alabama State for Deaf and Blind, and then there's two through community-based organizations in the state. Okay, this is a breakdown of all the services we provide. I also broke down the educational level, because I think you really need to see that we are working with very low-level students in many instances. We're talking about non-readers to limited reading proficiency, all the way up to students that are working at a secondary level. So we have the complete gamut. Our instructors out there, they never know who's going to walk in their door, so they have to be very dynamic in how they approach and instruct our students out there. We also provide corrections education, English language learners, or English as a second language. We also incorporate a civics component in that, so we help them become citizens. And then we do family literacy and obviously workforce education. Being aligned with workforce development is so critical for adult education, because we play such a vital role, and having that alignment is just another way that our state is way ahead of a lot of other states out there. Okay, I'm going to show you a quick video. If you don't mind, we'll get it started.
The link between education and prosperity is clear. We are living in a global economy that demands greater educational achievement and a more highly skilled workforce than ever before. Even though in the United States, our high school graduation rate is at the highest level in 40 years, one in five high school students still don't graduate. Graduation rates for minorities plummet to one in three. There are 1 million dropouts per school year, but a million is a big number and hard to picture. Put differently, every school day, 5,500 students drop out, the equivalent of eight high schools closing their doors per day. Dropouts are twice as likely to be unemployed as those with a diploma. They will earn 72 cents for every dollar earned by a graduate. That is $330,000 less per person over their career. Dropouts are more likely to abuse drugs and alcohol, become teenage parents, live in poverty, carry out crimes, and commit suicide. High school dropouts comprise half of the heads of welfare households. Three out of four state prison inmates did not graduate from high school. Dropouts cost taxpayers between $320 and $350 billion per year in lost wages, taxable income, health, welfare, and incarceration costs, nearly a billion dollars a day. Currently, there are 39 million Americans without a high school diploma. That's equal to the population of New York City, Los Angeles, Houston, and the next 15 most populous U.S. cities combined. But don't forget, that isn't just a statistic. That is 39 million individual stories, real people with significant but removable barriers to success. How do we move forward?
And that's what I'm going to share with you right now. The way we move forward in our state is continuing our efforts on helping our students, our adults, get a high school equivalency, helping them transition to post-secondary education and become skilled workers. Economic development in our state, workforce development in our state, is critical. The adult education plays a role in that. For us to be successful, we have to educate the people we have. If you look at the migration rate nationally, it's around 15%. If you look at the migration rate nationally, it's around fifteen percent. For Alabama, it's around eight percent. That means the people we have are the people we're going to have for the next five, ten, fifteen years. We have over six-hundred thousand people in the state of Alabama without a high school diploma or GED. Think about that for a minute. Six-hundred thousand, okay? That's a significant population. We also have a high population of people that already have a high school diploma but don't have the skills and abilities to really be successful in post-secondary ed or successful in employment. So we're there to help that situation as well. And we've got to provide support services to make sure that we get over those barriers. And it takes all of us working together. Skills is everyone's business. It takes us all working together to be successful. Here's something I want to just show you real quick. Yogi Berra, famous baseball player and manager as well, and he just recently passed away a couple of months ago. But if you come to a fork in the road, Yogi said, "Take it," okay? For our students, there's many different forks in the road. They don't know which one to take. They've never been down these roads before in these past. It takes us helping and guiding them and supporting them to be successful. We've got to advise them and work with them and counsel them and make sure that we're not only doing academics, but we're doing the life skills, the soft skills, the employability skills to make sure that our students are successful. Here's something I want to show you real quick as well. What we're doing in adult education is really taking a look at how we provide adult education. Many states have been very traditional in their approach to adult education. They've used a lot of workbooks and curriculum and things like that. What we're looking at is looking at standards and teaching the standards to ensure that our students come out college and career-ready. We want to contextualize our instruction in a way that it's relevant to our students, that we align it where they can understand the academics they're learning, how it's going to help them in a college course or how it's going to help them in the world of work. And then we want stackable credentials. How do we have the National Career Readiness Certificate? It's something we provide through adult education. Adult ed students don't have to pay for the assessment. They don't have to pay for the certificate. We pick up the cost of that. And then we also, like Dr. Alfred said earlier, we've aligned with Ready to Work. So we're actually making sure that our students flow into a Ready to Work program. And in many cases, we support them being successful in a Ready to Work program. And they come out with Alabama Certified Work Ready credentials, okay? Here's the key to everything that we're doing, especially in the future. And this is not just in the state of Alabama, but nationally as well. We're looking at ways in adult education how we can integrate education and training for success of our adults out there. And what I mean by that is blending it. Sometimes traditionally, we've had a certain format of education and then going into employment. Adult ed's played a role in that. But how can we integrate it so we actually accelerate the process where the skills they're learning in adult ed, they help them get a high school equivalency, in many cases are the same skills needed to be successful in a technical program? So we're going to be looking at ways of integrating those skills and developing career pathways. Now, this whole process is going to take a lot of professional development, training, support, you know, and we're going to be wrapping those things around our instructors out there. And it's going to be truly a team effort. You know, we're all in this together. We're willing to make sure that our state is economically competitive with other states. And we're really in a global economy now. So we've got to make sure that we're competitive with all other countries as well. So this is going to be truly a team approach. I want to highlight right now one of our programs that's doing the career pathway at Lawson State, where we have adult education students working toward a high school equivalency at the same time they are going through an industrial systems maintenance course. So at this time, Nancy, would you and Gwen come back up for a few minutes? A few minutes, okay? Ten minutes, two minutes, okay?
No, no. Good morning. Nancy, come over here. You're too far away. Nancy and I worked on a project along with a gentleman named Mr. Thomas, Lorenzo Thomas, at Lawson State Community College for two years, trying to develop a program where our adult education students can enter a career pathway while being enrolled in the adult education program. Well, one morning, we were sitting at lunch, and she was talking about one thing, I was talking about one thing, and Mr. Thomas was talking about another. And we realized we were all talking about the same thing. Getting our students moving forward who were in our adult education program. So together, working with adult education, career technical education, student services, and working with our local workforce development, Jefferson County Workforce Development, we came together and actually made this program work. And we're excited about it. We started with five students, and they're enrolled in our industrial maintenance program which falls under Nancy's division. And they're working for the GED, their CRC, and...
And their industrial maintenance short certificate. The students are in the industrial maintenance program with the college students. It is not an individual program for these students. So when they need additional help, the instructor from the industrial maintenance program will go into the GED class with those students and work with them. But if the students don't tell the other students in the class that they are from the GED program, the other students don't know. It's like having the dual enrollment students sitting in your classroom. If they don't really tell it, nobody would ever know. So it works very similarly. So they are in the class with regular college students.
And we are appreciative that Jefferson County Workforce Development helped us pay for these students to continue their education and to go through this program. They will graduate, some will graduate in the spring and others will graduate in the summer. Because as we know, that adult education students sometimes have issues that are unforeseen. And we've had a few of those, and we've learned through this process. We started in January of this current year. And we have seen that there are some things that we're going to have to tweak because there are situations that are adult situations that have occurred and may have delayed their graduation until the summer. But they're going to do it. One of our students stated, and you'll see that in your packet, that if I had not gone through this program and my teacher had not introduced me to this program, I would have dropped out of the GED class. And this student is now getting ready to complete. I want Nancy to let you know, we're going to sit down after this and let our twenty-five minutes, other minutes go. But she came to me and she said, "Gwen, I got the grades in today. And the top five students in the program are yours."
It was the first test. The first test is like two. From the first test, the grades came back, and those were the top five students in the class.
And so we give ourselves a hand. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a critical point of all of this, is if you provide the support services like they have at Lawson State, we can really ensure that our students are successful. The top five students in that class are adult education students. Why? Because we contextualize the academic and support them in the technical. I'm finished. I'm going to leave you with this. You can read it to yourself.
Thank you.
I flew through that. That's about an hour and a half for this thing.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your time. I have one last quick thing to do, and I want the people who do the work in our division, who are over here in the peanut gallery, to please stand and introduce yourselves and let us thank you for what you do to support all the great things that are going on around our state and our institutions. Dave, someone start off over there.
Good morning. Would you tell the career technical statistics for the student?
Is that everyone? Let's give them a hand. Again, thank you, Board, for your time. I apologize. I think we have broken the record of the developmental education guide. And we apologize for that, but I do not apologize for highlighting the great things that are going on in our system. Thank you for your kind attention.
Any questions from the trustees, to Tim, or for any of the staff? Outstanding presentation from everybody here. Just great hearing all those stories about all the programs. Just exceptional. Anything else from the board?
Yes, for one more time, if you don't mind, back to item two on our schedule meeting. For some reason, the legislators have chosen to go into session on Brown and Ohio State, which is kind of scary. But we are being real cautious of that, having outside sessions while they're in session. I didn't see my buddy over there looking at you so much.
Just got a quick, quick thing to say before we dismiss the poinsettias or however you pronounce them up front here for each of the board members. And they are supplied by Dr. Carlo Wicks and her. Vicky, who actually tell us the unit that produces this?
Our quarter company, our business program, do two major greenhouse projects of mass production here. The largest is the poinsettias and the southern eastern mules. And because we are not allowed to compete with private business, we decorate the state with the poinsettia products. We sell very few of them locally. They work almost all year, really beginning a bit early in May when they start planting.
Thank you for that. Of course, we have lunch in a few minutes on the third floor. And this will be lunch with the State Board of Education, with our president, and with my staff. So that'll be on the third floor. We will come back up here for the work session because the third floor is going to be occupied. So you can leave your things up here if you would like. So...
Any comments from the board members, trustees, any questions? Yes, Susan.
I would just like to make a comment. I had the opportunity last week to attend the tethering Christmas concert. And that was such a treat, and it's a hidden treasure. It was wonderful, and I appreciate the invitation and wish I could attend. Other invitations, I thank you all for including us. And we get a lot of invitations and try to go as many things as we can. But that was fabulous and outstanding, and I just put that up next to a Broadway show any day. It was wonderful.
We could talk on, we dedicated the new Performing Arts Amphitheater at the Fairhope Campus of Falcon State Community College before Thanksgiving. And it was a fabulous show, and it's a fabulous facility. I encourage any of the trustees or anyone when you're down in the eastern shore area of Ballin County near Mobile Bay, visit that unique campus in downtown Fairhope of Falcon State Community College. That new Performing Arts Center is really special. All across our state and all our institutions, they have so many great programs, cultural as well as educational programs that involve and engage the students. And there's just a great deal of talent. It's just great to have that great to enjoy. Thanks for sharing that, Susan. Anything else from you, the trustees? On behalf of the trustees, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and hope you have a safe, joyous time with your families. I'm now going to pay a motion to adjourn. To a second. All of us in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. We'll stand adjourned.